Welcome everyone to the April 22nd, 2025 regular session of the Mayor and City Council Hagerstown. The meeting is now called to order. First up, I'd like to have our invocation. Mr. Eric Williams, if everybody could stand please.
Dear Emily Father, we come today asking you for your guidance, your wisdom, your support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussions in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Everybody say amen.
You remain standing for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right, first up, I would like to introduce two Hagerstown Youth Council members that are here today, Mr. Louis Majula and Xander Heim that are rejoining us today.
Welcome.
A few announcements, of course, our rules procedure was applicable on December 17th, 2024. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in official record. Our main meeting schedules are May 6th, 2025, a work session at 4:00 PM. May 13th, 2025, a work session at 4:00 PM. May 13th, 2025 is public hearing at 7:00 PM on the FY26 property tax rate and the FY26 budget. May 20th, 2025 is a work session at 4:00 PM and May 27th, 2025 is a regular session at 7:00 PM. We have a couple of proclamations tonight, actually three of them. First up would be the National Public Health Week and I don't think our representatives here for that. Is that correct, Donna? Okay. I'm sorry.
We can get it to them after we're here.
Okay. The first proclamation is National Public Health Week. The week of April 7th is National Public Health Week with the theme for 2025 being "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and state. And 2025 is the 30th anniversary of celebrating National Public Health Week with the focus of raising awareness on the importance of public health and the work of public health professionals. And public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers and health professionals on issues that are important to improve the health of the people of the United States. Public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness. Therefore, I, William McIntyre, on behalf of City Council hereby proclaim April 7th through April 13th, 2025 as Public Health Week in Hagerstown, Maryland, and call upon our citizens to help our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in improving the health of the people of our state and achieving health equity. As the theme states, it starts here. Next up, we have Autism Awareness Week. We have Danielle Trent. Coming up to Eric. We have Dr. Brenda Cham and Josiah House. And there is a third one, correct? Is Tosh here?
No, I think there's someone on behalf of the Arch. There might be a family. Okay. Yes, yes, yes.
April is recognized as Autism Awareness Month, focusing on promoting, promoting, understanding, acceptance of individuals with autism. Autism affects one in 36 children in the United States. Emphasis has shifted, shifted from simply raising awareness to fostering true acceptance, understanding of diverse experiences, needs, autistic individuals. The theme for 2025, to celebrate differences, recognizing and valuing the unique perspective, unique perspectives, abilities of autistic individuals, showing that differences are a normal part of life, should be embraced rather than seen as something to, something to be corrected. Whereas by raising, wait, sorry, I'm nervous. By raising awareness of autism, not only during the month of April, but entering entire year, we are creating welcoming spaces where everyone feels valued and respected. I, William McIntyre, on behalf of the City Council hereby proclaim April as Autism Awareness Month in Hagerstown, Maryland, and call upon our citizens to learn more about the signs of autism to improve early diagnosis, understand challenges faced by individuals with autism, and find ways to support them.
Would anybody like to say anything?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. And thank you to the Mayor and City Council for this recognition of Autism Awareness Month. I am a current teacher in the school system here in Washington County, and I've taught special ed for now almost 30 years, 30 years, and primarily to individuals with autism. And certainly, the prevalence rate has increased since I started teaching in the late 90s to now. And certainly, there is a need for more research to help us determine why the numbers have increased at the rate that they have increased. But I want to encourage families and to people who work with individuals with autism that it is not a death sentence. It is not hopelessness. There is hope. There is work to be done with good resources that's currently available in the public school system and at the county level. And where we live, we know that people with autism can thrive in their communities, but they might need a little bit more support. And we are there to help them to be the best individuals that God created them to be despite of their disability. So again, we want to say thank you to the Mayor and City Council for this wonderful recognition.
Thank you for having us tonight and for recognizing autism awareness. Just thankful that we have a community that supports us and is willing to be educated on the neurodiverse population and embracing us. Sorry. And we are glad for the supports we have. We thank you for opening it up and making this a more inclusive community for everyone. Thank you. I do have, so I'm nervous because I'm giving my sister, I'm giving my sisters. It's all right. To me, you will always be my little sister. Not because of the term, because of a term that you never let define you, but purely because you are light. You took a term like autism and transformed it into something to symbolize passion, understanding, and commitment. You bypassed expectations and shown the world that you truly, that I truly need to advocate for you, for that I'm proud of you, that your determination and passion is unmatched. You inspire me every day. You are one of the most hardest working individuals I've ever known. Thank you for teaching me importance of advocacy and understanding. You show me that we must all stand together. I'm grateful for your guidance. To say the least, while this month is Autism Awareness Month, for the parents of autistic children and the adults, awareness is every day. Thank you for being you. And mostly, thank you, Mom, for raising an amazing woman. She's my little sister, not only because we're 11 years apart. So when we found out she was autistic, I'm 11 years older than her, and it was during a time where no one really knew what autism was. So the understanding of it has just been a journey for my mother and definitely for Danielle. So I thank the parents that have taken the challenge of understanding and awareness. It's because of the parents we understand what autism is. So every day is a challenge for them, and I encourage you all to understand it a little more each day.
Next up, we have National Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have Nick Myers from Justice Sake, James Gosserd, and Tiffany Rexrode from Washington County Social Services. Greg, you want to come up too? April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Children are our future, and protecting them must be one of our highest priorities, with more than 4.3 million children nationally being referred to Child Protective Services due to abuse. Daily, five children in the United States will die from child abuse, with more than 70% of these children under the age of three. And government branches, agencies, and departments, including human service providers, educators, legislators, law enforcement agents, judges, and child advocates, must work diligently to ensure to the best of our abilities that our children are kept safe and healthy. And Justice Sake was founded after baby Justice was found unresponsive in his crib for four months of age and later succumbed to his injuries. Despite the family's devastating grief, they were determined to do something to honor baby Justice. Justice's law was passed in 2016 and was part of a criminal justice reform bill increasing the potential sentence to 40 years to life for first degree child abuse resulting in death. Therefore, I, William McIntyre, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Hagerstown, Maryland, and urge all citizens to increase their participation in supporting families thereby preventing child maltreatment, abuse, and neglect.
Good evening. Tiffany Rexrode from the Department of Social Services. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the proclamation and welcoming us here tonight. Just wanted to say, if you're concerned about a child in our community, to please reach out to us. The telephone number to do that is 1-800-91-PREVENT, and we need your help in protecting children in the community.
All right. First of all, I'm not a, you know, public speaker, so, but I'm Nick Myers. I'm the Vice President for Justice Sake and baby Justice's grandfather. This is Ashley Rutherford, baby Justice's mom. So this is obviously a very touching thing, very hard thing for us to sometimes speak about, but we do what we have to do. You know, as you mentioned in your proclamation, you know, we couldn't accept what was, what was like in 2007. And Greg Alton was the arresting officer for us, and now he's a board member for us. So, and we just, we're just a small family group that tries to make a difference. You know, you see the beautiful lights downtown, you know, all that kind of stuff, all the flags everywhere, pinwheels everywhere. That's what we try to do, just to try to raise awareness. We hold an event every year. It's our big fundraiser. We support organizations that help. We can't do that. You know, that's not what we do. We can only help to try to raise awareness for the problem. So, you know, feel free to come out to the event, June 14th. Come on out, have a good time with us. We have lots of music all day, and we just try to have a good time and, you know, raise awareness to what's going on. So.
I just want to recognize, first of all, say thank you to the Mayor and Council for recognizing the problem and raising awareness to child abuse. But I do want to take this time to recognize the family of baby Justice. They took a horrible tragedy, and they have turned it into something positive. And they never stopped fighting. Even when the law changed the first time, they never stopped fighting. When the law changed the second time, they never stopped fighting. Today, they still fight. And it just takes a couple of voices to raise the awareness and to make a difference. And they are the shining example of that. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Agenda Items, Item Citizens Comments. Citizens and comments on agenda items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to three minutes. I don't see any emails on it. Okay. We'll go straight to our motions. Okay, first up, we have approval of the minutes. Mr. Mayor, we move for the approval of minutes as presented for the Mayor and Council meetings held on March 4th, March 11th, March 18th, and March 25th, 2025. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Approval of an Ordinance. Add Chapter 186, Nuisance, Abandoned Vehicles to the City Code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that Mayor and Council approve the ordinance to add Chapter 186, Nuisance, Abandoned Vehicles, to the code of the City of Hagerstown. This added chapter will establish an abandonment program to remove abandoned vehicles from properties, create and process, and notify property owners and registered vehicle owners of the abandoned vehicle. Establish the ability for owner to reclaim the vehicle after abandonment. Provide exemptions on how to maintain an abandoned vehicle on real property.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Approval of an Ordinance. Quit Claim of Alley Right Of Way.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to quit claim a portion of alley number 135 adjacent to properties occupied by Washington County Transit to allow for future expansion of their facilities. The City Council has determined that this alley is no longer needed for a public purpose.
Any second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Introduction of an Ordinance. Amend the City Code, Chapter 140, the Land Management Code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the Mayor and City Council introduce an ordinance to amend the City Code, Chapter 140, Land Management Code. The amended land management code includes the text amendment on commercial uses and outdoor recreation in the Palm Zoning District detailed in case CT-2024-04. This amended version of the Land Management Code shall be known as version 3.12.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an Ordinance. Amend the City Code by amending Chapter 140, the Land Management Code, to add or modify provisions related to state mandated direction on land use regulation of cannabis enterprises.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the Mayor and City Council introduce an ordinance to amend the Land Management Code, Article III, Definitions, and Article IV, Section Z, Chart of Permitted and Special Exemption Uses, to add or revise provisions related to cannabis enterprises. The Mayor and City Council acknowledge there are conflicts between federal and state law regarding cannabis. However, without any action by the Mayor and City Council, state law will permit the location of cannabis dispensaries in undesirable locations within the city. These amendments will limit the location of cannabis enterprises in the city and thereby protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Hagerstown.
Any second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Introduction of an Ordinance. Quit Claim of an Underdeveloped Right Of Way.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance, ordinance to quit claim an undeveloped portion of the Key Street right of way adjacent to lands owned by Washington County Fine Arts Museum to allow for further expansion of their facilities. The City Council has determined that the right of way is no longer needed for public purpose.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a Resolution. Memorandum of Understanding with the Administrative Office of the Courts to Provide Parking at the Hub City Garage.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Office of the Courts to provide a parking at the Hub City Garage. The City of Hagerstown shall provide 30 parking passes for use by the Circuit Court for Washington County. The term of the memorandum of understanding is three years, beginning on July 1st, 2025, and concluding on June 30th, 2028. The total amount to be paid to the city is $97,200 and no cents.
Any second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a Resolution. Approving an Extension Stopgap Contract and the Piggyback Contract with Calvert County.
Mr. Mayor, we move the Mayor and Council approval of a resolution to approve the Extension Stopgap Contract and the Piggyback Contract with Calvert County regarding the citywide speed cameras. The contract was bid out in RFP by Calvert County with Ultimate winning the bid. The price for each camera goes from $2,800 per month to $3,499 per month. However, the program remains cost neutral. The city will never pay more than the fees received from the citation in any given month.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion pass. Approval of a Resolution. Subrecipient Grant Agreement for Main Street Startup Grant Program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for Mayor and City Council approval of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a subrecipient grant agreement for the implementation of the Main Street Startup Grant Program to applicants identified on the attached list with the award amount shown. The subrecipient agreement for each will follow the attached template. The deadline for each will be 10/15/2025 or the date that all available funds up to the awarded amount has been dispersed. Whichever occurs sooner, any unused portion of the funding shall remain at the city and will be reallocated to another project or program at that time. Funding for this program is provided by a Project Restore Grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution authorizing the City of Hagerstown to consent to sublease and colocation at the property known as 13500 Volvo Way.
Mr. Mayor, hereby approve a resolution authorizing the City of Hagerstown to consent to sublease and colocation of the property known as 13500 Volvo Way per the attached request from USC OC of Cumberland LLC.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of On Call Plumbing Services Contract, 5125 through 43026.
Mr. Mayor, we move the Mayor and Council to authorize and approve Frightening Ritchie Company, Inc. as the City of Hagerstown's on-call plumbing contractor for various buildings and facilities within the City of Hagerstown on an as-needed basis for projects under $25,000. This contract also includes backflow preventer inspection and testing. The departments that will be utilizing these services are as follows. The parks, public works, utilities, light, wastewater, and water, fire, and police. These services were offered through bid proposal in March of 2025, Proposal P. 1845.25. Frightening Ritchie Company, Inc. was awarded the contract. The contract term is from May 1, 2025, through April 30, 2026, with the possibility of up to five additional consecutive one-year extensions, subject to the mutual consent of the City of Hagerstown and Frightening Ritchie Company, Inc. Frightening Ritchie Company, Inc. pricing is as follows as included on the provided charge for both plumbing pricing and backflow preventer pricing.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a Non-Disclosure Agreement with Columbia Gas.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move to authorize the execution of a non-disclosure agreement with Columbia Gas in Maryland related to CCTV footage that Columbia Gas will collect as part of their cross-court investigation program. The city may keep and use this CCTV footage, but may not share it with others without Columbia Gas' consent.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I must admit, I find a bit of humor in this non-disclosure agreement proposal, and maybe I'm a bit off-base, but what I understand from this proposal is saying that we're going to CCTV these lines. We're going to let Columbia Gas know where they directional drilled subgrade through our subgrade utilities, and then we're going to provide them direction for corrective action on the lines that they directional drilled subgrade through our subgrade utility. Is that correct? But we can't provide that information outside of the cooperative agreement that this includes unless Columbia Gas provides permission for the city to do so.
Go ahead, Jim. Is that a good summary?
That's correct. I mean, they want to, they're going to perform the CCTV and share the, share the footage with, with us. They just don't want us sharing that same footage with outside parties without their consent.
So I'm mowing the grass over the weekend. I got my headphones on. I'm listening to the eagle, and I hear this commercial come on about, you know, call Miss Utility before you dig, right? It's the law. And the commercial is sponsored by Columbia Gas, informing the average person, you're supposed to make sure you check where you're digging, where you're drilling, where you're putting subgrade utilities before you do so. But they had contract work drilled through our utilities in specific locations. We're just not allowed to provide that information because somebody may not have checked, right?
I think that the, my understanding- I think that the, my understanding is this, most of the work, most of the lines that they're looking at are lines that were installed in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties when BORON technology was fairly new, and I think that they, the contractors at that time did not take as much care to do the installations. Uh, I think that Columbia Gas now has much different procedures where they, anytime that they are near, uh, another utility, they actually have to do a vacuum excavation to actually put their eyes on that utility to make sure that they're not going through it.
I'm glad they're doing their part.
Yeah.
Okay, Kristen?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of city funding support for the Dome and Black Heritage Museum sponsorship for the twenty twenty-five Juneteenth event.
Mr. Mayor, mayor and council hereby directs staff to provide ten thousand dollars in city funding for event sponsorship for the June twenty twenty-five, uh, Juneteenth celebration. The ten thousand dollar sponsorship will be provided on a reimbursement basis and the following receipt of event application and budget. The funding details are reflected below ten thousand dollars from overall G F contingency operating budget.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, approval of wastewater deduct meter at five six zero Western Maryland Parkway. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I, and I don't have my glasses. Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the attached request from Maryland Cultivation and Processing LLC located at five sixty Western Maryland Parkway, Hagerstown, Maryland for a sewer deduct meter in accordance with city code two forty dot sixty-nine exemption of service charge which allows for sewer deduct meter whenever it's established that the entire amount of the water delivered through a meter does not and cannot enter the Hagerstown wastewater collection system, but is legally discharged or consumed in such a manner, manner as not to impose on the Hagerstown collection system. An exemption of the sanitary sewer service charge may be made on application of the customer within the absolute discretion of the mayor and council as to the measurable water consumption which may be undelivered to the W P C system. The wastewater deduct is further described in the attached staff memo dated April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Approval to increase the pool management contract amount for the twenty twenty-five season.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to approve an increase in the pool management contract amount at Potterfield Pool for the twenty twenty-five season. The amount requested is one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eight thousand dollars plus a contingency of ten percent for unseen issues.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of one full-time position in the water department.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to, to approve adding one water meter salesperson position. This position is necessary because of the increased service population and, and the associated increase in workload. This position will be funded through the water and water wastewater operation fund.
You got a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. All right, next up is going to be general citizen comments. Um, general citizen, citizen comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes. I know I'll call your name out, but please state your name and address when you come to the podium, please. Uh, first up is Karen Dunswalford.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members, for, uh, allowing us to have our three minutes to speak each month. Uh, my name's Karen Dunswalford. My address is eighty-three twenty-eight Reichardt Road, Fair Play, Maryland, uh, two one seven three three. I am president of the Hub City Chapter of the National Railway Historical Society, as well as Save Locomotive Two O Two, and I'm here because we're still awaiting a decision on Locomotive Two O Two, and I promised that I would be here every month until we do get a decision. Uh, so today, excitingly enough, I was driving by the City Park Train Hub, and there is a huge banner advertising not only Hager House, but the City Park Train Hub. So, woo-hoo! We at least know that the train is not going anywhere this year. Uh, I'm thinking that due to that advertisement, so super exciting, um, but want to let you know that we're unrelentless with our work. We have had, uh, three days of volunteer events at the City Park Train Hub. We scraped, primed, and painted the park benches there. We cleared brush from the fence. We also, um, did power washing on the eighteen eighty-five caboose that's there, and we cleaned and prepared the inside of the museum for the opening day. Uh, at the end of those three days, we do want to thank you, mayor, for stopping by and seeing us. That was really great, uh, uh, for you to join us for a couple of minutes there. Um, and then after we had the volunteer events and the park opened, we did have a big, big Easter Bunny event there on April the thirteenth, so two Sundays ago, and it was a complete success. We had over seventy-five kids that participated in an egg hunt. We had an interactive story. Alva Moses, my man over here, did a, a poem reading as well. That was all based around Locomotive Two O Two. So, it was just absolutely wonderful. Um, it was great to bring joy to the children, which is what we are all about. Um, speaking of that, we do have a flourishing partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Washington County. We will be helping them provide educational experiences and interactive activities that are STEM-based for their entire, um, educational base. So, that includes, uh, eight different locations that we'll be interacting with. That could happen before the school year ends, but will definitely be part of their summer program. They have a seven-week summer program. We'll be doing onsite tours at Locomotive Two O Two, as well as the Roundhouse Museum, who is also another one of our partners. Um, so we're really looking forward to, uh, having that partnership in the works as well. This upcoming Friday, we actually have three living historians that are going to be onsite at the City Park Train Hub, providing educational, uh, expertise to teach children what it was like to be, to live in the nineteen forties and to be taking trains and to be an engineer and how that, how that job looked like in the nineteen forties when Locomotive Two O Two was actually on the rails. So, those are some things we're working on. Wait till next month with, with new stuff we have going on. Okay? Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Karen. All right, next up, Richard Roach.
Richard M. Roach, one three four one five Marsh Pike, Hagerstown, Maryland. I am also a vice president with the Hub City Chapter, National Railroad Historical Society, and the Hagerstown Roundhouse Museum. Just want to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to be here this evening. Before I get into the locomotive, I just wanted to thank, uh, everyone in this room, really, that works for the city, including the council. An unprecedented storm went through here, uh, just a few days ago. Um, I've been a resident in this town for sixty years, and I don't recall anything quite, uh, of that magnitude. I think you're all doing a fantastic job, uh, fire department, police department. I realize there's some frustrated folks out there that still don't have power, but in the whole scope of things, I don't think there were any lives lost, uh, or any serious injuries, and I think, I think we're a blessed city, uh, for that to be the case compared to what we see on the national news out of some other areas and other storms. So, thank you all very much for, for everything. I think you're doing an awesome job in unprecedented circumstances. So, back on the locomotive, we started this journey in June or July of last year. Now, here we are in April of the following year. Um, we've done everything that we've said we would do, and we're going to continue, uh, to, to fulfill every promise that we make, uh, to the children of Hagerstown and to the mayor and council. Um, but I, I would respectfully ask that we get this issue back on the agenda, uh, sooner rather than later. Um, each month that ticks by is another month that Locomotive Two O Two is not receiving any tender loving care, uh, which we are more than passionate and willing to do free of charge, uh, to the city through our organizations. Uh, and I just feel like that this would be an easy one for you to get off your plates. I know you got a lot of serious issues. So, uh, we've sent emails, uh, to date that have kind of gone on, unaddressed, unresponded to, trying to get back on the agenda. So, so please, if we're doing something wrong, tell us what that is so that we may get back, uh, on the agenda in the proper fashion. On another note, I just want to, as Karen said, I just want to thank Mayor McIntyre and Councilman Flaherty for taking the time to visit our crews out there over those three workdays, uh, and, and at our Easter event. I, I know for a fact the rest of you would have done it if your schedules would permit, but Easter week is, is obviously got a lot of family stuff going on. But it means a lot to our volunteers to, uh, to see the city officials show up out there. So, thank you, uh, really, truly, from the, the bottom of my heart. And again, uh, that's no dig against the ones that didn't show up. We're sure if family, you know, commitments would have permitted, you would have been there. But it is a real, uh, a pat on the back, if you will, even though, uh, you know, uh, not, not a realistic pat on the back. When we see you there, uh, that, that's good. So, just in closing, real quick, uh, thank you all. Please get us back on the agenda, and, you know, we're committed. We're not going anywhere, and we love you. Have a blessed evening.
Thanks, Richard. Next up, um, the one and only Alva Moses.
Alva Moses, eleven West Baltimore Street, apartment twelve thirteen, uh, Hagerstown, Maryland. Um, I had the honor of being at the event for Save Two O Two. There was a lot of people, a lot of positivity for the, for Hagerstown, and I'm able to be, I was able to do some things with, uh, my mesdees last month, and, um, I got to see some nonprofits like Eliza's House, and I like the positivity that is being brought to our town. That's what we need, more positivity and more, uh, you know, bringing the positive back instead of seeing the negative. There's a lot of negativity, and there's a lot of stuff that's going on, and I love what's happening that's helping with our, with our place. So, thanks for letting me share.
Thanks, Alva.
Thank you.
Next up, signed up Matt Breedy.
I'm going to offer my time. I'm Mr. Tammy Hardesty from Platoon Twenty Two.
Hi, good evening, mayor, members of the city council and community members. My name is Tammy Hardesty, one one eight North Mulberry Street. Um, I'm here this evening on behalf of Platoon Twenty Two, a mission-driven, community-based nonprofit dedicated to supporting our veterans as a transition from service to stability. Platoon Twenty Two's mission is to end veteran suicide by improving mental health and quality of life, life through comprehensive supportive services. The twenty-two in our name represents the heartbreaking statistic that an estimated twenty-two veterans die by suicide each day, a number we are determined to reduce through action, compassion, and connection. Over the past year, our organization has provided over eighteen hundred individual services to veterans in our local community. These include care coordination and case management, peer support, wellness programming, financial grant awards, and acting as a service provider for the Veteran Treatment Corps. Already this year, we provided more than three hundred services to local residents, and we're just getting started. In twenty twenty-four alone, the primary focus of our financial grant awards was on rapid rehousing and avoiding evictions. Why? Because we believe that affordable, stable, stable housing is the cornerstone of recovery, dignity, and long-term success of our veterans. One of our proudest accomplishments is the renovation of the property at one one six North Mulberry Street, right here in Hagerstown. That home now provides six independent one-bedroom units to six veterans, four of whom were previously homeless, one who is re-entering post-incarceration, and another who lost everything in a divorce. These men now have a safe, stable place to call home and a real chance to rebuild their lives. Tonight, we are respectfully requesting abatement of the twenty twenty-four property taxes on this residence. We have already filed the proper paperwork with the state of Maryland for future tax exemptions. Unfortunately, due to an error in the address we had on file, we did not receive timely, we did not receive timely notice for the current year's tax filings. As a small, community-based organization, every dollar matters. The relief we are requesting tonight would directly support our continued work. In particular, our effort to purchase a second vehicle for transporting veterans to essential medical appointments, including frequent trips from Hagerstown to Martinsburg, the A M C. Many of those veterans are residents of this city. Your support won't just waive a tax bill, it would have put fuel on, in our van, provide on-the-ground support, and help restore hope to those who have served.
And I'm going to take the rest of the time. I became aware of the situation in my official capacity as county treasurer about a week ago, and I can verify that there has been communications between the State Department of Assessments and Platoon Twenty Two, and it was an error that this property was not declared tax exempt. Um, and one correction, we're looking for the twenty twenty-five abatement. The county, the city tax rate taxes are three thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. This property is now currently in tax sale status. I have it on the agenda to bring this presentation to the board of county commissioners seeking abatement also to get this property out of tax sale status. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that's last on the list, but is anybody that is not signed up, um, for general comments would like to speak? Mr. Steve Jones.
Hey.
I know who you are.
My name's Steve Jones. Uh, I'm the guy that's been going around town doing the cleanups. Uh, we, we've removed about ten thousand plus pounds from, uh, Anzeedam Creek alongside Eastern Boulevard. It's something that we've been doing every day for about two hours, uh, for the past two months, not just at this location, but other locations throughout Washington County and Hagerstown. Um, basically, a lot of the cleanups are abandoned homeless encampments, but there's also trash from cars and, in parking lots. Uh, I, we've been bringing a lot of the community together, um, just people that, you know, care about the city, care about the county. Uh, you know, I'm not going to stop doing it out every day for two hours. We're, we're basically looking for volunteers, not looking for any funding today. Just looking for volunteers. Um, the group is called Cleaning Up Hagerstown on Facebook. We're going to be rebranding as a nonprofit hopefully soon as Keep It Clean M D, but yeah, just wanted to make an introduction and hopefully make some new friends today. So, thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate, Steve.
Thank you.
You did great work.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. Next up is our acting senate administrator comments.
Good evening. First, just want to send lots of prayers out to the Nice Warner family this evening. I also want to thank and, uh, express appreciation for all the city staff, workers, supervisors, and our outside contractors that we had to call in to assist with the restore of our electric power. Many of our employees, including supervisors at level, were here from Saturday evening, some for twenty-four hours and longer straight. Um, so I think many do not realize just how small of a staff we have at the City Light Department, and I'm not going to go into too many details or statistics in case others want to share that information. I do want to press, um, happy news and give, uh, some information on events happening later this week. Thursday, April twenty-fourth, from four to seven is downtown neighborhood cleanup. So, thanks for all those volunteers that signed up, and we put our shout out and request. The cleanup areas are Market Walk, Franklin Street, and South Prospect Street. On Friday, April twenty-fifth is the opening day, flying box cars with fireworks, Trust Home Financial Grand Opening, Rue Barb House twenty-fifth Anniversary, Summer Kickoff Tailgate at Lighters Fine Catering. And then Saturday, April twenty-sixth, we got the Hub City one hundred miler final walk from nine to eleven at City Park, followed with Earth and Arbor Day, also at City Park from eleven to one. Sunday, April twenty-seventh, from noon to four is the City Farmer's Market at Hub City Brewery once more, and next weekend is Hagerstown Music Fest and Art Festival. I know that there is probably other recreational events and things that I am missing, but those are just a few of the other things that we have going on around Hagerstown, and it'd be a great weekend to come out and celebrate.
Awesome, Michelle. Thanks.
Thanks.
Congressman Asher?
Just want to echo, uh, the acting city administrators' comments and, uh, thank, uh, city staff, and I'm sure, uh, probably a lot of other folks and organizations and other governmental entities, uh, over the last couple of days. Um, you know, I would note the, the comments here this evening, uh, uh, about being out and about. being out and about. And here's the reality. I know folks see us sort of sitting up here, six individuals, and you can kind of get a bit detached at times that, that we're sort of six faces up here. They represent the citizens in this role, and that to some degree we may not be able to then relate to the citizens sort of looking back at us as individuals that, that live directly within the same community that you live in. And, you know, I think to that effect, we were sharing stories Saturday evening via text with one another about sort of, you know, as things occurred, you know, what was going on, whose yard was affected, you know, where the storm was happening, you know, those types of things. And they were affecting us exactly at the same time, exactly like they were everybody else, and we had the same exact concerns as any other human being and citizen had in the city at that time. Giving you example of myself, that's probably the first time in the 20 years that I've lived on Virginia Avenue with my wife and five kids that I've ever said, looking out the window, you need to go to the basement now because it just doesn't look normal. That's the only time I've ever said that. Directly after the storm, I went outside, and my neighbor's across the street, and Virginia Avenue is a busy place at all times. It doesn't matter when it is. And he's holding these two cable wires up in the air because cars are just about hitting it going by. And so I run across the street, and I cut the two cables for him. You know, we didn't realize, you know, that, that, you know, the tree's down, two, two houses down from us, and that takes out the power of those two neighbors. And then the next day, as you indicate, you know, we, we all have in mind, you know, that we're going to, that we're going to get up and we're going to hide the eggs for our children out in our front yards and side yards and backyards. And they don't look like they did the day before. And I go down to a neighbor's house, and I expected to go to dinner that day with family, but instead I spent about seven hours rebuilding a fence down the street between two of my neighbors, both of whom are elderly individuals, you know, because that's what you're supposed to do in instances like that. And so, yeah, we can't be everywhere that we'd like to be in those instances. But I'd like to think as fellow citizens, we try to be exactly where we're supposed to be in those instances. And so I thank everyone over the last few days that have done exactly that.
Councilwoman Anderson.
For tonight, I just want to say, Hagerstown is truly a very unique and special town. After experiencing three national disasters myself, living in South Florida, I can tell you right now, I've never witnessed and experienced such a quick response as far as that cleanup, timing, lights back on, different locations in Hagerstown. So Hagerstown is truly special. Everyone who has been able to chime in and help, whether you were a city worker, or you were contracted, or you just lived within the community, you guys really put your foot forward there. So again, Hagerstown is truly a special town. As far as, I wanted to respond to a little bit of the comments that came up here earlier today. To Alva, I want to thank you for sharing that poem with the children this time of the month. I'm not sure if you're aware, but it is also National Poetry Month as well. So you kind of link those two together. When it comes to Karen and Rich, my God, your commitment and your consistency, I don't think it goes unseen. And I would hate for you guys to think that. And I truly appreciate and commend you coming in week after week after week after week, week. You know, you guys are really putting your put-down. And it's great. You know, people need to see that true level of commitment. And, you know, just committing to something like the train, you never know what you might inspire somebody else in this town to sit there and commit to. So you never know. The other person I wanted to respond to was Platoon 22. I hope we see you back sometime next month. That way we can celebrate you for, you know, appreciation for Veterans Month, and possibly see you sometime again in November as it's also National Veterans Month. And, you know, just you coming out here today and sharing your story with us, I think that is something that needed to be heard today. So I truly support and commend you as well. And as for Steve Jones, you are like, are you running the show by yourself? Do you have other man handy? Like, how does, how are you doing this?
They come up with me.
Okay.
Day after day. They should be, yes, me and Teresa and Shereen that help out a lot.
Okay. What you're doing is criminal. I don't think, yeah. I don't think I would be able to do that. But it's amazing what you're doing. And again, I don't think you guys are witnessing what's truly happening here with what Steve is doing, with what Karen and Rich are doing, with what Alva's doing, Eliza's house. I mean, it goes on and on. Hagerstown, I'll say it one more time, we had less than 10 minutes with that natural disaster. I happened to be driving in it. Horrible, horrible, horrible. Again, the response time, the cleanup, the actions, the feedback on Facebook, you guys are, I've never seen a town like this. I am so grateful to be living here. So that's all I have for tonight.
Councilwoman Bennett.
Going to echo everyone's bright sentiments tonight about thanking the city, the county, the, the number of hours, the responsiveness. Just, just thankful, thankful, grateful. I was actually out of town during the storm, but when I came home last night and just saw all the damage, it was, it's one thing to see it on social media. Thanks, everyone, for sharing what the, what the certain neighborhoods look like and the conditions. But actually seeing it in person, I was just, just devastated. My neighborhood at Hager's, Hager's Crossing was one of the neighborhoods that was not really impacted by the outage of the electricity. We were blessed in that case, but it didn't stop me from reaching out to family members. My grandmother was actually looking out for my animals. She was, she hates storms, so she was like panicking. But obviously, reaching out to my family and my neighbors, making sure everything was okay. One of my neighbor's house, there's a tree in front of his house, Mr. Dr. Mancy, that's my neighbor. The same tree was hit again, just a couple, two weeks ago, that same tree from a storm crashed, uh, front of the, the tree fell into the parking lot. This time, that same tree snapped and fell towards the house, but barely like missed the house by a little bit. So he is truly, truly blessed. But overall, just the patience, thank you for 18,000 customers with the city for their patience. And, you know, again, reaching out to each other, making sure everybody's okay, seeing the organizations like YMCA offering their shower services. It's commendable how the community comes together when, when there's a situation and a need that impacts us all. So really, really thankful for everybody. And today's Earth Day. So great opportunity to get out in your neighborhoods to help clean up the debris. There's a press release earlier today by the city about offering services to help with removal of those tree branches and debris that's been scattered across our neighborhoods. There's, like Michelle mentioned, neighborhood cleanup on Thursday. There was one by the Bester Hope, kind of community cleanup tonight. And there's going to be another one April 27th, Saturday. The city's having an Earth Day. Jonathan Street Neighborhood cleanup, cleaning up Hagerstown is like every day. So all that to say is there's plenty of opportunities to get up and get out and help our communities look better. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bell.
Excuse me. So while I'm getting dressed, the city was actually in the back of my house putting up them wires. So like, like everyone said, the city has truly been on it from like day one. And just to piggyback Christian, like we were texting back and forth like, look at this, look at my yard. So I don't know who I thought I was. Like, the next day, I was down at the other end of Pope. Like, I was getting ready to like move the roof or something. But the other, I live on Pope, and Pope got hit pretty bad. And I just kept checking on, checking on my neighbors and making sure they was okay. And a company from Easton, Maryland was up here, and they, I mean, they was on that, on Pope to like 1:00 in the morning, just helping. And it's, it, we have to understand that it's continuous. Like, it's not something that will be up and running in a day. So thank you to the citizens for just being patient. You know, we see the emails and we see the calls. And like Christian said, we, you know, we're in the thick of it, too. We're, we're your neighbors. We're your citizens as well. I think, Mayor, your lights just came on last night, you said? Mayor McIntyre?
Yeah, 9:00.
Yeah. So, you know, we're just getting, we're just getting back moving as well. I was super stoked, not that I know Topper shot, but he commented on my, one of my pictures from the roof being lifted. And he was like, I'm going to use one of your images. I was like, yeah, Topper. I don't know. But, um, so yeah, there's a lot going on in Hagerstown. Went to the downtown business meeting this, this morning, was packed in there. So I love to see that everyone's coming out and seeing what's going on. It's a lot of cleanups going. It was going to be a lot of cleanups anyway, so it's kind of fits right in with what's going on. So, yeah, that's it. That's all I got.
Councilman Flaherty.
I appreciate Locomotive 202's activism and y'all showing up and everything like that. And, you know, I really appreciate that. You guys have been doing a lot for the town and bringing to light the issues of the train and things like that. So I appreciate that. Also want to reintegrate my support for first responders in the utility workers and everybody that, you know, on a short note, that's came out and helped everybody with all the help that we needed throughout the city on that. And yes, the 24th, I'll be doing a cleanup here in town and encourage everybody to do that. And luckily, my power did turn on Sunday, right before I was start to do the ham. So it all worked out. But a lot of folks I know were out of power, some even don't have it today. So, but that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks. I have a couple items, but first I want to apologize to the council. I may feel a little long-winded here, so forgive me.
Take your time.
Okay. As your mayor, I have prioritized open communication and being accessible to our community. It is essential to me to be available to listen to your concerns and suggestions. However, I feel it necessary to address a growing concern regarding the misuse of this direct line of communication. I have noticed and been informed about a trend where the accessibility of myself and the mayor's office has been used to try and undermine the diligent work of our city staff, particularly in departments where enforcement actions take place. If you break in the law, break in the city ordinance over the fire marshal limit in an establishment, doing work without a permit, I will always back our city staff. Our public safety and enforcement work tirelessly to maintain safety and order in this beautiful city. They are committed professionals who serve the community with integrity and dedication. I appreciate everyone's passion for the community. However, I issue to channel this energy into constructive dialogue and collaboration with our city staff. I remain steadfast in being here to listen to ideas and help solving issues or any problems that anyone has. Thank you for your understanding and support on this. I also want to thank, piggyback off of everybody else, thank the light department, the water department, public works department, police, and fire departments. They worked tirelessly since this storm started. We've had, what, it's roughly 18,500 customers, and we lost 13,000 at the end of the storm. And I think, Michelle, you said 300 were left as of today?
Yes.
And most of them will be covered today?
By this evening.
Okay. So that's 70, roughly 70%. My gosh, in three days, and we've got everybody almost back online. That is amazing. I, the, the city staff has done excellent job. I want to thank, and again, I want to thank everybody that worked their rear ends out for the city. I also want to thank all the citizens who came together and helped each other out. At midnight, you know, when it happened at my house, at midnight, I'm hearing people out in the streets, the chainsaws clearing, clearing the streets out, helping each other. And that's what community is all about in this. And I, and I want to thank the citizens as well. Again, and second prayers go out to our city administrator, Scott Nice Warner and his wife, and quick recovery. And if he wasn't, if he wasn't going to come to the podium, I was going to say something anyway. Steve Jones does an amazing job, and his whole crew. I want to thank your crew, too. And whatever volunteers you get, you are helping this city out immensely, and I truly want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Do I get a motion to adjourn? In a second. Any discussion or anything? Okay, we're adjourned.